Our report will also provide a progress report summarizing the committee's completed work thus far. These preliminary findings surround the review of the Special Victims Division suspended incident reports, which total 9,167, and are divided into three categories. I want to add that HPD has been forthcoming and transparent in providing data to the committee. Additionally, HPD presented the committee, to the committee, laying out their workflow and review process, and they did that early in our meetings. This is important because much of our review will track and be contingent on HPD's progress. HPD's Office of Planning and Data Governance provides weekly updates on the status of their internal review. And we have been reviewing the cases as we've gone along. I'm going to turn this over to Christina now, who will give you an idea of our, up to this point, of our brief recommendations.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. I'm going to try to keep it as brief as possible while still being able to convey the substantive details of the work we've been doing. And I think it's very important that we share our progress thus far. And we've done a lot of work in the six weeks. As Councilmember Cohen noted, the committee's interim report is complete, and it will be released today for review by all of you. Now, the report is focusing on the historical timeline, as well as the progress of our review, which focused on the Special Victims Division cases, the 9,167. Now, the historical timeline begins in 2014 and extends through November of 2021. And the timeline focuses on the creation of the SL code, the use in the review of the SL code, and, to a lesser extent, the discovery and continued use of the SL code. And I say "to a lesser extent" because that becomes the primary focus of the internal IAD investigation, which does not, is not encompassed in the scope of our review. The Independent Police Oversight Board, which I also oversee, is tasked with the oversight of all the cases that would potentially result in misconduct of HPD employees, to make sure that we are complying with state law. The historical context, though, provides a backdrop for the committee's overall review and assessment, because it contextualizes how the department got to where it is today. So it was very important that we included that for the public and for council members to understand the process. Now, before I get into the substantive details of our review of the Special Victims Division, I'd like to briefly describe the background and the methodology of our review, as well as some preliminary fact gathering steps the committee took. Our review will encompass an examination of a statistically significant sampling of 268,920 incident reports that were suspended under the Code Lack of Manpower. Statistical significance helps quantify whether a result is likely due to chance or some other factor. And it means you could feel confident that it is real and grounded in fact. As a starting point, members of the committee met with members of HPD to gather an understanding of the complaint process, the various ways a citizen can make a complaint, the process that the incident reports are routed throughout the department, and ultimately assigned to an investigator. We learned very early on that, due to lapses in technology, the process can very easily become inundated and complicated in ways that have directly contributed to the problems that we see today. HPD's Investigative and Special Operations Unit is divided into three commands: Criminal Investigations, Special Investigations, and Homeland Security. There are 16 divisions falling under these three commands, but 11 of them are primarily devoted to investigations, and so that was where our review was focused. Members of the committee met with the case management teams from various investigative divisions to understand their internal processes. We observed inconsistent methods of case management between the divisions, with very little checks and balances. The initial focus of our review, as I mentioned, is the Special Victims Division, or what many have come to refer as the sexual assault cases. There were 9,167 incident reports suspended under this code in that division. Members of the committee met with various members of the Special Victims Division to get an understanding of the division's case management process, both past and present. HPD initially divided their review of the Special Victims Reports into three priority groups. In our initial review of the data provided by HPD, we noticed immediately the large number of variations of the same offense title. For example, sexual assault could also be referred to as sex assault, aggravated sexual assault, aggravated sex assault, ag sex assault, and so on, as you can imagine. In fact, we counted over 500 varying offense titles in both a drop-down menu as well as a free text box. We believe this directly contributed to the mistitling, which is all done manually, and potential mishandling of various incident reports. The committee chose to review 10% of the incident reports from 2016 to present, in both Priority Groups 1 and 2 of the Special Victims Division. And these reports are centered around high priority and the most severe sexual crimes. This approach ensured comprehensive coverage both vertically across the years and horizontally across offense type. This percentage represents a much larger portion of reports to review than a statistic, standard statistical calculation. But because of the nature of the crimes, the impact on the victims and the community, we thought it was most appropriate to review a higher percentage of these cases. We will be following the same methodology as we continue our next review of major assault family violence, their priority groups that have a close next list to family violence. We are reviewing in accordance with generally accepted government auditing, and all of this is outlined in detail in our interim report. We used a random sampling application to select 10% of the incident reports and requested those reports from HPD, which included all of the supplements created by HPD personnel. HPD has been forthcoming and cooperative with all of our data requests. As Ellen mentioned, we receive weekly and sometimes multiple times a week updates on their progress. As the committee members reviewed the incident reports, we noticed common trends that led to our preliminary findings and recommendations. With respect to our preliminary findings centered on Special Victims Division, 95% of sampled incident reports had supplements submitted. That indicates that the case was reopened for investigation. However, 5%, we observe, of the 5% remaining, we observed that 4% had a final disposition without any supplements, and we requested further clarification from HPD with respect to that subset of reports. It is the committee's position that every investigative action or step should be documented on a supplemental report. 85% of the sampled incident reports had final disposition codes. Of these, 75%, and this is as of May 1st, were categorized as inactive due to no further leads. 1% were suspended due to patrol arrest, or suspended due to no leads, and 5% were cleared. 4% were closed by investigation. The remaining 15% that did not have a final disposition are currently under investigation. Approximately 4% of the sampled incident reports had CODIS hits, and these are all under investigation. Although I anticipate HPD providing some specific data directly sometime in the future, I wanted to share some recent stats with regard to the total population of SVD, or Special Victims Division, reports, the 9,167. 52% of these reports have been assigned for investigation. A total of 264 charges have been filed, including 38 felonies and 226 misdemeanors. Based on information provided from the District Attorney's Office, 238 of those 264 have been resolved in some form, whether by conviction, plea, case dismissal, et cetera. Of the 9,000 and so reports, approximately 41% have been inactivated, closed, cleared, or suspended. And 87 have been cleared lack of prosecution, meaning the complainant did not wish to pursue charges, and HPD had a suspect identified. And I just want to give the caveat that there are a number of cases where the complainant did not wish to pursue charges, but there was an unknown suspect. Now, these are preliminary recommendations. We divided it into two different categories. One are the department-wide preliminary recommendations that we're making, and then the second group is specific to the Special Victims Division. We are recommending written directives for policy changes affecting the entire department. And this is to ensure clear communication and consistent implementation of department-wide policy changes. We are recommending attendance protocols for all executive staff meetings and command staff meetings. We are recommending meeting minutes be recorded during, for all decision points for these meetings. We are recommending general standard operating procedures for the records management system, the RMS system, and case management. Comprehensive documentation of the procedures and protocols governing the use of RMS and handling cases within the department. This documentation should cover critical aspects such as data entry, retrieval, storage, security protocols, case assignment, tracking, and closing procedures. We recommend case assignment process must have reasonable and workable timelines, excuse me. HPD shall define clear and realistic timelines for the assignment of cases to investigative units or individual detectives. These timelines shall consider factors such as case complexity, priority level, available resources, and departmental workload. Supervisory review of, or chain of command approval before an investigation is suspended or made inactive. We are recommending a multi-level review of that. We also recommending that, with the new implementation of the RMS system, which I believe is supposed to come next year, that they simplify RMS offense titles, ensuring they are consistent with the Texas Penal Code. The committee proposes the following recommendations specific to the Special Victims Division: Creating a process to consistently review divisional and unit-level email inboxes where incident reports are routed for handling. This would include: A system-generated response for follow-up verification upon CODIS notification. Collaboration with the Houston Forensic Science Center to develop SOPs specific to lab results and testing. A process to ensure all lab results are uploaded to RMS in a timely manner. We are recommending 24-hour availability of an SVD investigator for incident referrals or questions. Improved coordination with victim services outside of HPD. The department should actively seek to establish partnerships and collaborative relationships with external victim service organizations, including nonprofit agencies, community-based organizations, advocacy groups, and other governmental agencies, with the shared goal of supporting victims and promoting justice. Updated victim notification protocols that include input from the Houston Area Women's Center. HPD should engage in collaborative discussions with representatives from HAWK to seek their input and expertise in updating victim notification protocols. These discussions shall include reviewing existing protocols, identifying gaps or areas for improvement, and exploring best practices in victim-centered notifications. We are recommending a mandatory HAWK-administered 55-hour training for all members of the Special Victims Division. Recognizing the specialized nature of handling cases involving vulnerable populations, the committee proposes a mandatory 55-hour training program administered by HAWK for all members of this division. We are recommending co-facilitated victim- and trauma-centered training at the patrol level in the academy, plus a yearly refresher for all officers. Recognizing the pivotal role of patrol officers in responding to and supporting victims of crime, the committee proposes integrating co-facilitated victim- and trauma-centered training into the curriculum at the academy level. We noticed during our review of incident reports that often it is patrol officers who are the first point of contact for these victims, and a lot of times, they just are not equipped with the skill set necessary to appropriately address the issues that are happening at the scene. Now, regarding incidents, incident reports, and this is specific to our verification process, with a final disposition of inactive, no leads, where the victim survivor could not be located, and there is a substantial portion of incident reports that are inactive because they could not locate the complainant and the victim survivor. We recognize the challenges associated with locating victim survivors in cases where leads have been exhausted. The committee proposes enhanced collaboration with victim service organizations and human trafficking agencies, such as The Landing, United Against Human Trafficking, and the City of Houston's Mayor Office of Case Manager, to facilitate the location of victim survivors and provide them with the necessary support and resources. And lastly, when scheduling a forensic interview with victims, which is a preferred standard practice for the DA's office in dealing with, particularly with sexual assault crimes, we are recommending that the HPD allow the victim survivor to schedule an interview at the convenience of their individual's schedule. The timing of the interview shall not solely be dependent on the availability of the investigator or allocution of overtime. Our work is not done, but we are prioritizing victim-centered crimes, with the shared goal of improving the Houston Police Department and ensuring the community that this will not happen again.
You understand this is our preliminary report. And actually, and you should be getting that after this meeting.
Yeah, we just sent out copies of the preliminary report.
So you'll have copies, you'll have all that information in your hands today.
Thank you, Chair Cohen, for y'all's comprehensive review. I know it's ongoing. It's safe to say absolutely that the code usage has been stopped, that all these sexual assault victims have been, cases have been reviewed, incident reports have been reviewed, and certainly, they've been offered counseling and other services that you are putting them in contact with, and the family violence. Did you mention, Christina, you have so much data that the property crimes and other incident reports will be processed, certainly were not the priority that the one-on-one crime was, but that's part of the continuation that you're going to...
That's correct. We are going to focus on all of the incident reports that have a nexus to victim crimes, but we will be reviewing a standard statistical sampling of the remaining crimes, which include property crimes, vehicular crimes, and all of those.
Before I yield to my colleagues, is there anything that y'all need, any additional information or resources that you need to complete your review? Anything you think of this morning?
I don't, I don't think so.
Are you getting access to HPD data that you need?
I'm sorry.
Are you getting the access to the HPD work product in their review process?
Yes, we are. HPD has been very forthcoming. Whenever we focus on maybe something that we see is missing in one of the incident reports, they're willing to sit down, walk us through the process. They are open to our suggestions in terms of better ways to deal with, you know, some of the investigative actions that we see. And, you know, as I mentioned, sometimes multiple times a week, they're updating us with the status of their review. I haven't had any pushback from HPD.
And to you, Christina, specifically, have you been able to separate your duties on this review process and assignment from your Office of Policing Reform and Accountability for the City of Houston? I mean, they are both critically important, but should be independent, in my judgment, from your work there. And I think it also highlights how valuable your service is to this review that we're looking at today. But have you been able to keep your responsibilities separate?
Absolutely. I don't co-mingle the information, because I want to respect the requirements of the law. I do meet with the members of the Independent Police Oversight Board, and we have constant communication about their review, their review of the underlying IAD cases, which are separate and distinct from the review that the committee is doing of the incident reports.
Very good. I yield to Mayor Protam Kastig Statham.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the entire board. I know that this was a big undertaking, and we appreciate the update. I think that everyone that makes a report to HPD definitely deserves a response, and there will be some requirement to rebuild the trust of Houstonians to know that, when they make a report, that there will be a response. I think the recommendations that we've heard from your update, I look forward to reading those, because there was a lot of information. But from the onset of what you've talked about and discussed, I think that we are moving forward in a great direction. You've put forth some great recommendations. But Mayor, I think that what people really want to know is, what will be the accountability of the people that actually use the code? I think the questions that are looming in our community are, where's the, there's a disconnect. There's a disconnect of who was responsible for this code, who was in charge of investigations when this code was being used, who is going to be held accountable for actually using the code and not following up on these particular cases? I mean, there has to be a genesis of how this started and why it was allowed to continue. I think the work that you have presented this update on is great. And moving forward, I think that we are in a better position, because we have brought this to light and are going to make some changes. But I do think that people want to know who is going to be held accountable for using this code, generating this code, and how do we rebuild and restore people's faith in HPD by holding the people accountable who thought that this was a good idea?
I mean, one piece I can add is that, in the report you're going to receive, it does go back at least 10 years, I believe, and it does give dates and historical information about how this happened and how it's, and what happened to it. In terms of the penalty phase of things, I think that's going to be up to HPD and the mayor.
And I think that's going to be critical, Mayor. The people will want to know, you know, how this started, who used it, who made it okay to use it over and over again, and, you know, who's going to be responsible for that so that we can move forward with these great recommendations?
Well, I'll comment. First of all, IAD, the Internal Investigation, is going to do their review, which is part of the investigation. The mission of this review is to see that HPD's review is credible, thorough, and factual. So they were, in my judgment, and since I appointed, was not trying to determine the fault with individuals and personalities, some whom most of us understand are not even with HPD anymore, certainly former chiefs and former assistant chiefs. But I know there is, due to the complaint and the request for an investigation, that report will be forthcoming. This was more a review of the process, the victims making certain they're cared for, and recommendations going forward. Any fault, there's plenty to go around. I think we know from 10 years of usage, at least four chiefs of previous administrations. So the focus is, one, that it, that we guarantee the public that it's been stopped, that incident reports will be reviewed. I might as well mention right now, nearly everything that you recommended is going to require additional staffing, which kind of highlights how we got in this mess in the first place. So, you know, you pay now or you pay later. If we have the resources to do the reviews that you are recommending going forward, the collaboration with the Victim Assistance Group, the Women's Center, the training, it's going to require additional staffing, and I think we should highlight that. But I share your concern that people are held accountable. We certainly don't want them in positions of responsibility if they favored this, unless now they recognize how wrongful it is. And I do, I do believe we need to restore the trust in the process, but I will emphasize from my contacts and traveling the city, people do support and respect HPD. I know a lot of officers have contacted me and my office. They were, there is this part, I still, you know, I don't want to belabor the point. I still find it so mind-boggling and unacceptable that for 10 years, no stakeholder, no active officer, no employee group, no administration, no one brought this to our attention until this year. It's just, you know, things are just not easily kept quiet around here. So anyway, apparently, that's what the review shows. I think there will be investigation reviews reported in the near future, and then we can have a discussion again. But this was to focus on the review of the incidents and see that the victims got the attention and the assurance that they needed. I understand, it's very understandable. Some victims have moved on in their life, have new families, new jobs in communities, and did not want to revisit these horrible circumstances that they reported at one time. So the guarantees need to be that it's been exposed, stopped, and will never be used again, whatever it takes us to prevent this in the future. So, thank you for your comments. Councilman Kayman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions, and some of them you all may not be able to respond to. And Mayor, I hope that this esteemed group will be able, Mayor, as he walks out. So I'll just make the public request that I hope to see you all soon back here once, in the next phase or in the final report. I also hope that we will be able to ask questions of the IAD, the Internal Investigation, because a lot of those specifics, Mayor Protam, to your point, as we move forward, first, we also need to complete the past and right that wrong, and those are questions that have to be directed towards them. Can you, and I first and foremost want to say thank you for the trauma-informed, and emphasis on victim and survivors that you all are taking in this, because that's who matters first and foremost. So thank you all for adding that in as we do look forward. Can you clarify the timeframe that you all reviewed?
2016 to 2024.
To 2024?
24, yeah.
Okay. And you had mentioned, you used two different words, and sometimes the public has been getting confused, so I just wanted to clarify for the record. When you're talking about the SL codes reviewed under SV, the 9,167, at the beginning of your presentation, you said it was 9,167 cases. Later, you said, and I believe in the report we just received, it's incident reports. So I just wanted to make sure we're talking incident reports of 9,000, not cases.
That's correct.
Okay. And that matters, of course. One is too many, but when we're talking about incident reports versus cases, there's a distinction. You mentioned lapses in technology, and I'm assuming you did touch on the RMS system. This is something that, as Mayor and the horse you know, I have been pushing hard on for four years to get that, and we're just a year away from getting that new system implemented. But when you talked about lapses in technology, is that specifically the RMS system? I know you mentioned it can be categorized different ways. So you have like ag sex assault versus sexual assault. And the RMS system, as it stands, we can't undo certain labels, right? It's stuck in the system, that's how old and antiquated it is. So did that kind of, one, impact how you were able to do your investigation, making it more difficult, and, two, do you think that played a role in this?
I don't think, I don't think it affected our investigation, our review and assessment, because we are reviewing the work of HPD. I do... I do think, in trying to understand how we got to our present situation, that it played a huge role, just because, as I understand from speaking with HPD, not only is the RMS system antiquated, but they, each division may use a different database, whether it's a Microsoft Access or something, they don't, a lot of these systems don't speak to each other, so the transfer of data, there, you know, there is a breakdown in communication there. And so information doesn't flow as efficiently as it should, and I think that contributed to the process.
And I think also, when it comes to auditing, you're making a lot of auditing and oversight recommendations, and the current RMS system makes it extremely difficult to do that as well. So, Mayor, whatever we can be doing to get the new RMS system in place, I know the funding is there, and I know it takes time to transition, but that's going to be critical in this. The timeline in the report, we were just sent it as you all were presenting, and there's a few things that stuck out that I'm concerned with, that, again, you may not be able to speak to, but I'm going to ask the question specifically on pages 13 and 14. There was a, I think it's called a Blue Note memo back in 2021 that was sent to one of the assistant chiefs that left HPD prior to any of this coming to light, and that's, I think, one of the first documents of that being alerted to the executive command. You then go down, though, and it wasn't necessarily presented allegedly to the executive command with Chief Fenner there until November 4th of 2021. And that's where he said, get rid of it. And then the next day, if I read correctly, is Astroworld. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the Astroworld tragedy happened the next day, which we knew took a huge, huge focus from the entire city and the nation, right? An absolute tragedy. And then it goes back to one of the executive commands that asked if it should be circulated throughout the department so that everyone knows it, and the individual that had already left HPD had said, no, it doesn't need to be circulated department-wide. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mayor, again, as we get into this in the details, to the Mayor Protam's point, we have to look forward and move forward in rebuilding trust, and not just rebuilding trust, but making this the premier model for response to sexual assault survivors and victims of crimes in the nation. And as we work towards that, though, we also have to heal, and that means actually understanding what happened. And I think there's been a lot of finger pointing, but again, what I'm just preliminarily reading in the five minutes since we received this is there are things coming out of this that are concerning to me about who knew what and who also didn't know what. And I hope we will have the opportunity to ask more questions on that. Lastly, can you just quickly go back over, again, focusing on our survivors in the community and building trust? What additional resources and support has the city, if you know, been providing to victims that have been identified through the HPD process? I know you had mentioned that we are doing referrals to outside organizations, but are we, Mayor, providing additional support and resources for those that have been tragically impacted by this?
So with respect, are you talking with respect to the subset of SL cases?
Or to, just generally, I believe you had mentioned that when there is someone identified that has been impacted by this SL case, take, for example, a sexual assault victim, or I like to use the word survivor. We're referring them, I believe the process, it sounded like, is to also refer them out to an outside agency to provide additional support. But are we, as a city, providing additional support? Are we providing additional resources to, for example, a HOC to take on these additional cases? Are we providing additional steps in the process and sensitivity and care with these individuals that have been impacted?
First, HPD's conducting that, their referrals as they meet with the victims, and certainly the review process, we've heard the assurances smart that they're reviewing that. And the victims have been offered, and they're used in counseling and other support systems, and that's one of the strong recommendations, that ought to be part of the regular interaction with HPD and victims as they not only complete the investigation or incident reviews going forward, future years. We need, as you said, let's make a model, how Houston deals with sexual assaults and all the different terminology that Christina mentioned. I mean, that's part of the problem. What is the proper identification for the victims in terms of their services required? But there are a lot of good services out there in intervention and accountability, but it requires staffing, and I think that's a missing component. First, you can't fix something if you don't admit we have a problem. That's being conducted as we talk. The response is going to require resources and collaboration and go to state, get, you know, the state passes a lot of legislation dealing with sexual assault victims, human traffic victims, but we need the resources to follow it.
And I understand that, Mayor, and I think HPD throughout the years, in large part, Mayor Protam Cohen, to your work at, again, Houston Area Women's Center, some of those program transformations have occurred, and we are moving in the right direction. But as we identify a very, a number of individuals that didn't receive those resources, and I would say, due to this specific issue within HPD, are we providing the additional support in terms of finances to, for example, a Houston Area Women's Center that is having to take on those additional cases? Are we making that right?
My knowledge, and you've been here longer than I have, but my knowledge is the city has not provided the resources that are necessary for some social agencies to go forward, partnering with.
Well, we've provided millions to Houston Area Women's Center. I'm just talking about.
I understand, but we still have a problem. So we've, you've mentioned it and sent resources, but it's documented that we have not done enough. So you ask, have we done it? You just mentioned that we have referred resources. You bring up great issues. I'm just simply saying is, whatever we've been doing is not enough. And if you want to make it a model for the nation, which we all would join you in, it's going to take more resources, more collaboration, and upfront proactive services. And that's, by the way, the reason Ellen Cohen is chairing this review committee, and each of her colleagues are very committed, looking at their other jobs. They do outstanding service providing, but Ellen Cohen has such a record of accomplishment providing women's services and victim services, that's why she's heading up this team.
Right.
So we'll follow the recommendations, go forward, find the resources, and hopefully give everyone the services they provide.
So, Mayor Protam, to ask this specific question, as we are identifying these survivors that have been impacted, I'm sure you will include it in your recommendations, but what additional funding or service provision should we be giving to those that we're outsourcing support services to specifically as it relates to this matter, which is distinct from moving forward what that model is?
And again, I would mention that this is a, you know, a preliminary recommendation. While we've met for six weeks, really, it's been five that would have been focused on the cases. And my hope is that, not my hope, my intent, is that the committee, and I will present our final recommendations, I can't give a date, but when we do, it will include the types of things that you're talking about, very much so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protam Peck.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to each of the committee members for your work. I know it's a big job, and I appreciate all the time and care that you've put into this. As far as the recommendations, those were a lot of recommendations that we just heard just now, but a lot of them sound really great. And to kind of piggyback on what Councilwoman Kayman said, so as far as implementation of these recommendations, you said that it's going to, the final recommendations are going to go to the mayor. Are there any thoughts about how those final recommendations would be implemented from the committee's standpoint? I know the mayor will probably have thoughts about that as well, but are there any recommendations from the committee as far as how to actually implement that? Like, will there be a checklist or something like that to actually show that those recommendations are getting done?
I think that, you know, as we have moving through this process, we are building relationships with Houston Area Women's Clinic. I reached out to organizations involving human trafficking, because I see a lot of common themes there with some of the incident reports that I'm reviewing. We also are very collaborative with HPD. I think it's pivotal right now that they are open to receiving any potential criticism, and there's room for improvement there. And we have also kind of partnered with the District Attorney's Office. We have sat, members of the committee have sat in with meetings between the District Attorney's Office, specific to the groups of SL cases, and HPD to formulate recommendations that will change the process moving forward, so we can see how that implementation will happen, not just with respect reactively to this incident, but proactively with all victims.
Thank you. And Mayor, you know, the report, we just received it, and I'm sure that there will be a lot of questions. I know I'm going to have a lot of questions. And Vice Chair Jackson and I would really like the committee to come to the Public Safety Committee to provide updates, or even if it's before full council, that's fine too, but just, we would love to have follow-up conversations, because it's a lot of information that we will definitely have more questions about.
I totally agree. Councilmember Pollard?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm just reading, first off, thank you all for your work and your diligence. Thank you, Mayor, for the foresight of putting together this group of individuals to look into it, and even to the members who are sitting behind you, I want to thank them for their service. Couple of questions. In your report, it states that initially in 2015, and going into 2016, there were eight one-hour classes that were done to, I guess, notify or train certain individuals within the department on this new code, the SL suspended lack of personnel, and it was only for investigative personnel. Is that correct?
Yes. And just for clarification, it was for new RMS codes that included SL. So it wasn't specific just to this code, but they were adding additional codes to RMS.
And so all of the codes that they were going over were only with the investigator personnel, not with the entire department? Is that correct?
I believe that the training was focused on the investigative divisions, although at certain levels within patrol, if they have proactive units, they may undertake some investigation, they have access to the same RMS system as others.
So how would the entire department know that this code existed? Or did they know that the code existed?
I believe what I have observed in speaking with the different divisions is there is inconsistency in terms of what people knew and what they didn't know. We found that some investigative divisions chose not to use this code at all. And so I think that speaks to your point that the communicate, there were gaps in the communication, and so some people took the training head-on and implemented it in their division, and others chose not to. And there was no direction that I observed given to them to make that decision.
So for leadership within HPD, specifically the executive command staff, would they have to be the ones to give the approval for any subordinate to be able to utilize this code? Or how would they be given notice if they were, let's say, transferred from, you know, commander to executive level that this code even existed?
I didn't find a lot of information leading me to believe that the executive-level staff were extremely involved unless they were specifically tasked with this project. You know, I believe it kind of started in 2014. Otherwise, it was very specific to the individuals who were taking an active role in working with RMS and developing new codes for the system.
And so through your investigation, it was seen that certain departments within HPD had the discretion to use this code, and some chose to use it and some chose not to?
That's correct.
And they can make that decision without the knowledge of the executive command staff?
That's correct.
And did you all find any rationale or reason to why it came out now and under this particular leadership?
I believe this stemmed from a very specific incident that happened in terms of how it came to light, a crime that occurred in the fall of last year, and I think that's what department-wide, how it be, everyone kind of became aware of it.
No further questions. Thank you all. Councilmember Plummer?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, thank you for what you're doing. I mean, I think you're not only bringing your resolve to the victims, but, you know, of course, I am incredibly aligned with Chief Fenner. And so I think this also brings some honor to him as well, because from what I'm hearing right now, the majority of the cases have been resolved or reviewed at some level, and that was under his leadership. And I think that's really important to note, because he just got there in 2021. So I think that's really important. So, two questions here. One, what is your relationship, or what is the relationship going to be if it's been determined, with your investigation and the Internal Affairs Division? Are you going to share, not share information, but are you going to, is there going to be some level of communication or giving of information to them, or are they completely separate, independent?
It's completely separate. The IED investigations under Chapter 143 are confidential as a matter of law, and so that is not the focus of our review and assessment.
Of course. But at some point, we'll have two pieces of information to kind of, not compare and contrast, but we'll have two different reports that we're able to look at at some point. Is that true or no?
I'm not sure. I just defer to HPD on how they want to share whatever data for that underlying investigation.
Okay, that sounds good. And then the, I would just have some, and of course, we just received the recommendations, which I think are amazing, but I would just love to just bring to point a couple of different things. One, for us, we clearly know that there, and this has been mentioned by other, my other colleagues, it's been mentioned that a lot of the recommendations they're making is going to have some budgetary attachments to that. So it would be really nice to have some level of idea what that number would look like at some point. In addition, any type of standardization of specimen collection for the officers, I think would be something would be beneficial, just for consistency. As many of you know, women of color are really overlooked when it comes to domestic violence, to sexual assault, et cetera. And I know and I respect all the work that HOC does, but they're also entities, and I'm just going to mention, like Fresh Spirit, who is some Dr. Conte Terrell I work very closely with, she specifically works with women of color. And I would just really love to just broaden that a little bit, to make sure that every single person, from a diverse perspective, is dealt with with that. So if HOC is clearly leading that charge, I completely acknowledge and I'm fine with that, but I really want to consider bringing other partners in as well that deal with women of color and Adva as well. I mean, they do a great job. And if there's some way that they can be directly affiliated with that from a funding perspective or some type of agreement, I think that would be really good to community. Okay, just a couple of just high-level recommendations.
Thank you.
And just thank you again for everything.
No, I think it's extremely valid in terms of additional resources, and I would suspect that would definitely be in our final report.
Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you. Thank you for this really good work. Once the panel was announced, frankly, I was skeptical about what was going to be presented back to council. So this is very good work. Your recommendations are informed, they're beyond fair, you can tell that the entire committee has gone the extra mile. But I can't help to imagine that if Troy Fenner was still our chief, that all of But I can't help to imagine that if Troy Fenner was still our chief, that all of these recommendations would have been adopted. He would have eagerly looked to adopt this and to transform the practice of this code in the department and has not been given a chance to do so. But so in relation to the recommendations, are you thinking general orders? Or is that an ordinance that would need to come through the administration for council to adopt? To Councilmember Caiman's point, a significant amount of dollars around the women's area-centered, particularly ARPA funding, CARES funding, we've been really diligent around that. In your recommendations, I know Councilmember Peck mentioned about a checklist, but in terms of really codifying what this is and the practice, I'm eager to that. I accept all recommendations that y'all have put forward. I think the information in the preliminary report is really helpful in browsing through that. I am affirmed in my instinct that information was withheld from Chief Troy Fenner. I am affirmed in my instinct that he was not given the opportunity to lead the department with all the information that has been provided today. And so hopefully, we can pivot and move forward. Our acting chief, Saddle White, is great, like him a lot. He's good for the department, he's good for this city, and hopefully, the recommendations that are offered today, he can lead forward and we'll be able to see the fruit of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Carter?
Well, thank y'all for your report. We just got it. And honestly, on the heels of confirmation from the governor's office that the, and certainly Ellen, you can identify with this language, the VOKA funding for FY 2025 has been cut by 42%, will be reduced. And certainly in Austin, they're making, they're taking measures to try to mitigate the impact. But when we talk about the services and what the city has done and for Houston Area Women's Center, keep in mind that the funding given, provided to Houston Area Women's Center is very specific. And it's not to cover these services. It's, it's, you know, on the expansion of the Capitol campaign over there. And so when we look at this, we, I think, I just want to remind everybody that Harris County holds the record annually for the most victims killed, domestic violence, which, you know, we can talk about sexual assault and it all leads up to it. But we hold the record, but the funding continues to be, to be cut. And that's at the state level, the federal level, and on and on and on. But it's now, more than ever, the need to collaborate with our friends at the county, at the state, at the federal level, and, and try to, again, move forward in a positive way. But that, that need for collaboration now is the time, if it wasn't before. I mean, we're in a, in a very pivotal point, or at a very pivotal point, and, and we've just got to step up and bring everybody to the table with us to, to, again, focus on the victims and the survivors, not on the, the coding and, and the past. We need to move into the future. And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both for your important work and thank the rest of the committee that's worked on this issue. It's important, it needs to be done. And I have an observation, it's not intended as a comment on leadership at all, but it's great that we're looking at these cases now. It's great that some of them are still able to be solved and handed over to the prosecutor for prosecution. But, you know, my background, and I'm sure you understand, Christine, every case that's handed over now to the prosecutor for prosecution is, is a weaker one, is damaged to some degree because these cases were not adequately investigated when they occurred and when the reports were first made. I, I hope that we'll be able to solve as many of these cases as possible and get them to the DA's office so they can be prosecuted and so that justice can be obtained. But, you know, my observation is that the fact that we're doing that at this point does not cure any errors that, that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you. And I might just add that, you know, one of the things that we're discovering too is the number of steps that have to go through on a case. And that is another reason that things have been tied up. I mean, for example, you said it can go to the DA's office. And the DA's office can easily turn around and say, we don't accept it. They can go to forensic science and they may not be able to examine the material. One of the log jams in this whole system too. Thank you.
If I could just comment briefly, just with respect to the SL cases. HPD has proactively met with the DA's office, who has created a special group to handle the victims impacted by the SL code. And so it's separate and distinct from their intake process, from the normal handling of the cases, to be more victim-centered and to prioritize these cases in addressing those needs, to hopefully have better outcomes for some of these cases that were able to survive.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to first begin by addressing, Mayor, I want to thank you for taking the leadership. Let me just put it out there, for putting this team together regarding this issue. As I'm just perusing through the information that we've seen, it's always been the three factors with me regarding this issue, and that is, number one, how did we get here? Number two, what are we going to do to fix it? And number three, what are we going to do to make sure that we never go back there again? One of the things that I looked at with most of the material, and I will look at it even in depth, to take a deep dive in it, but one of the things that stood out for me is on the Exhibit A, which, which the team obviously researched and pulled up, and it was given on the October 24th from Chief McCullough, who addressed this issue way back in two previous administrations back, on the issues of staffing. Because the bedrock to this whole problem is about staffing. And it explicitly talks about the staffing problem. And I would, going forward, that we don't get in the woods and ignore the fact that the lack of staffing in our police department, which is, as I stated on the other day, is a great police department, but under the circumstances, it takes a lot of work. And it takes a lot of, of, of every area of our police department to cover these issues. So I, I, I just want to, like I say, I, I hope to take a deep dive, I'm sure everybody else will as well, but I do want to just say to the group that has come together and to our council, that we don't lose sight of that this did not start yesterday. This has started years ago, and I think we, we cannot ignore it, those that are new and those that are old, they've been here. And so we, we need to make sure that we cover all of that. One of the things we learn in life is you have to accept responsibility and accountability for your actions. Whatever you sow, it, you're going to reap it at some point. And I'm hoping that going forward, that we use some, some real good sense about what we need to do to supply our police department with what they need in order that this problem never happens again. So I just want to thank you and the team for this, and I'm sure there'll be further discussions on this matter. Thank you.
You know, not only the incident labeling that we're dealing with, but how much time do we spend here listening to the public about neighborhood conditions, lack of response, hotspots that they've been labeled correctly, whether it's Potomac Street in San Felipe or Southmore and 288, it just goes on and on. So that's the reason we've got to continue, in my judgment, to make public safety our highest priority. Because if we don't solve that and give the HPD and other first responders the resources they need, most nearly everything else we talk about, it is not going to matter if we don't make this city safer. And not just with some statistics that study groups and FBI run out, but the evidence is the people that appear before us weekly and our constituents that we hear from when we go to community town hall meetings.
Yeah.
We got a serious problem. We're going to do very aggressive recruiting. I think we look at the collaboration with the other agencies, we look at reserve, we look at retired officers assisting us, but we've just got to continue to make that a priority.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I think the public would support us, and that'll be part of the consideration as we look for additional revenue. Councilman Pollard?
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on how this code initially was instituted, you all report that the people who were first notified of it went through a training, were the investigative personnel. Each executive chief, to my knowledge, is responsible for different divisions or departments within HPD. Is that true?
That's correct.
Did you all find out through your collabor, through your investigation, that the executive chiefs that are over certain divisions, do they have a, do they have some type of mechanism or some type of collaboration to where they know each other's standard, standard operations at all?
Not that I observed, no.
So you can be an executive chief over one division and not know what is going on within another division?
Yes and no. Now, I will say that during the course of meeting with HPD, HPD routinely has command staff. They have multiple meetings that happen weekly and bi-weekly where executive staff and command staff are present. But just, you know...
But to understand their standard operations, it's not a requirement for the chief, the executive chiefs to kind of know each other's standard operations?
That's correct.
So when we talk about how to prevent this from happening in the future, because this is a code today, it could be something else, different tomorrow, is there some type of recommendation that you all are proposing to where at the executive chief level, that they're able to know the operations of the different divisions?
I think that at some point, we will be recommending process and protocol for, that are specifically related to the flow of communication from top to bottom. I did notice, at least preliminarily, that there are no, there's not even a baseline expectation in terms of meeting with your commanders or having certain meetings beyond the executive staff, you know, situational violent crime meetings. There's no set policy saying, you know, you're now an assistant chief, on a monthly basis you need to meet with your division commanders to find out. It seems to be more of a reactive position, as I see it now, like it's your responsibility to let me know if something is wrong. And so I think recommendations surrounding communications, so everybody can be as informed as possible, will be forthcoming.
Because right now, within HPD, where, how it looks is you rise up through the ranks and then you get to commander and maybe executive chief, and you know your area, which may be, you know, patrol, but you may not know what's going on in a different division. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so because of that, for a person like Chief Fenner, who rose up through the ranks and became the, the chief from the executive level, there was nothing put in place that he could be aware of what was happening with this specific code?
Well, I didn't speak directly to Chief Fenner about this. I, I agree that there's nothing that I was able to locate about a process put in place to share information across divisions.
And I think the big point is, just because you're the chief or an executive chief, has no bearing on you knowing anything about this particular code.
I do think it's the, it puts the onus on the person to take the initiative to want to find out that information. Otherwise, there's no responsibility that I was able to locate.
And when you say put the onus on that person to want to know the information, that I mean, that's such an open question, because there's, the information is endless. So unless you're looking for something specific, there, there's no way for you to be able to for sure know that information unless there's collaboration or, and a requirement between the executive chiefs to share that information.
Yes.
And because of that, a person like Chief Fenner, who did an excellent job as our chief, and has had to be at the forefront of this as being the chief, there was nothing to point to the fact that, until he recognized it in 2021, that he would ever have known about the code.
Well, I, I believe that really, we're kind of getting into the information of the...
Just based on your investigation?
Because I am privy to both sides, both the IAD investigation and to the Independent Review Committee, I'm going to defer to when IAD investigation is done and IAD decides to release what information may revolve around that topic, because obviously, I want to maintain confidentiality.
So you do know the information, you just can't share it? Is that what you're, is it...
Not necessarily. I just think that I, we need to be just mindful of the boundaries between the internal investigation, which is confidential as a matter of law, which focuses on Chief Fenner's directive in November 2021 and the outcome that happened after that, which includes, you know, what he may or may not have known with respect to that, from our review, which is focusing on the work that HPD is conducting specifically to the incident reports.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would add to that, you know, the committee itself is not involved in answering, or involved in what you're asking now. We are involved in reviewing the reviewers and understanding the cases themselves. So in terms of the issues surrounding Chief Fenner, the committee, is the five of us, really can comment.
Thank you.
And I would comment, Councilwoman Pollard, the, nearly everything you ask is the basis of Chief Hatcher's request for an investigation by IED to the timing and the accountability of the issue. So as Chair Cohen just said, this, their review is more the work product of HPD than the lead, certainly, investigation. But the Hatcher letter, if you look at the wording of it, she, she was there in a meeting when the request was made to stop using it, and that's an active investigation by IED. Councilwoman Caiman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, because Mayor Pretend Cohen, you had said, you know, your work specifically is relating to what HPD is doing right now. You're overviewing, you're overseeing the review, so to speak. Mayor, going back to my previous point, because I don't think I was clear, so I just want to clarify, what I am respectfully asking for is a response either from your team or from HPD, as it relates to what additional support and resources we are currently providing for the victims and survivors that are being identified right now. I know that the recommendations look forward towards what additional things we can be doing, but for the victims and survivors being identified right now, what, I would like an answer to that. Again, not, doesn't need to be at this horseshoe right now, but I would like a response to that.
Obviously, I think it starts at the top with the chief and his divisions that will make that part of the protocol. I know the district attorney, I probably didn't emphasize enough, I know before, she pursues these cases that are being referred to, one of her requirements is that the victims receiving counseling and, and services that they so badly need. So we'll, we'll pursue a protocol that HPD, rules and regulations, they should follow so we can not only expect, but know that the victims are getting the services that you speak to. Anything else? I, on behalf of the, the whole council and citizens, we thank y'all. I mean, I look at your, your jobs, whether it's being a pastor or a law enforcement, city attorney, inspector general's office, brought a public servant. I'm not sure, Ellen, you were really retired, but certainly, we appreciate your giving of your time, and I know you have a lot of work left to do, and we thank you. I know you're going to be available for, for a while. You certainly can use my office, or if council members would like to talk with you, certainly, you can make yourself available in the, in the back halls. But thank you, and we'll continue this conversation, and thank you for your public service.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members.